Okay, I did it.
Way to go. Well, we didn't set any chairs out for the public. I'm just joking. Nobody ever shows up for the public.
About the budget if they never come and give it some sense.
Well, I don't quite take that attitude, but in general, I've said before, we'd love that public here. I mean, sometimes they're just, they've got this one little thing they want to talk about. Okay, I get it. And we may or may not care. We, I've said for years and years and years and years, we make a lot of decisions in a vacuum. Because we don't get public input. And then we make a decision and then we get public input. Okay? Not bad. And then we can always just say, okay, we give.
Yeah.
Just like, just like the stop sign. So. Uh, but I did talk to the county today about the one way. They were fine with it. They said, they said, you know, we don't really have a preference. I said, we have three choices. We can, we can make it one way, which is what we discussed. We can do nothing and just leave it as two-way. Or we could do away with the diagonal parking. And they said, they kind of liked the diagonal parking at the county.
Right.
But, but they said, uh, in terms of making it a one way, you know, that we just, uh, we're not, we're not too worried about it. You just have to be able to put up with all the public. Uh, pushback. And I said, look, Tim, I'm just gonna forward my phone to yours.
Right.
Yeah.
I talked more about that. I walked to the post office this weekend. I was thinking about it. And I warmed up to the idea. Not that I was cold, but.
Well, but you don't know.
And I was at the post office Friday and, and stood there. I was coming out, walking, and I watched the mail truck, because you know, I try to go by four thirty so that we get our mail in there. And I watched the mail truck turn. And he had to wait until the cars turned left or whatever to get out of his ego's all the way because the diagonal parking made it no problem as long as no cars were there. I think it should be. I think it should be easier.
Hey Tracy. Hey Jeff. Come on, grab a seat.
You sure?
I'm pretty sure. I don't think we, I think we have more seats than we have council members.
Next, next week, I, I, I don't want it to hinge on me, but it will be very difficult for me to make it here Tuesday night next week.
Oh, what is next week? Is that the first or third or what?
Uh, it'd be the first Tuesday.
First Tuesday, be the fourth. Okay. You're the only one that said you can't make it, so I think we're okay.
And I'm not like, I can't. It just, um, I wouldn't bet five dollars on it.
Oh.
Okay. That's fine.
Might be a little late on next week. We'll be driving back from the airport, so.
Oh, okay. Hey, Max. How are you doing? Long day?
Yeah. We, uh, man, budget season, work sessions.
I like the way you guys are doing it, though. I like this. You're very organized, very thoughtful.
And keeps us out of the weeds. What's this four and a dollar?
Wow, so you might need a few more.
I think we're gonna be okay.
So, we.
We'll see who's gonna show up. It's almost six now. Um, we have Tracy, um, on and we have the three of us, so we, we, we don't need a core for work session anyway, but it'd be nice to have as many city council members as possible.
Main Street.
Started. I saw they had three blocks done by about they hadn't done the intersection yet, because they got a factor closed there to do the intersection.
Next week.
No, no, no. Uh, this guy is doing a good job. Maybe he's doing. Looks good. So. We're looking for you, though.
They, that budget sessions gets very boring.
Uh, we're gonna keep this, this one is gonna be pretty short. Nothing is gonna take a long time. I think we'll be done by six forty-five.
Henry is, uh, is taking his proxy for his mom, so that's good.
He, he uses this for his online class. But I can't teach it, otherwise they won't let him into his class if my name is on it.
At least you're not a cat. You, you all know that, that the lawyer made himself a cat and appeared in court as a cat.
I did not know that.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta fix prices. Yeah, he couldn't figure out how to undo it. So he appeared in virtual court as a cat. Talking cat.
Couldn't take the filter off.
Could not. And the judge was very polite, but yeah. And a poison counsel is lyric. Oh, I would think that. But there, yes, at least you're not a cat.
Or a potato. I think a boss somehow turned herself into a potato and couldn't figure out how to get back.
Yes, that's also one that, yes, potato was good.
You guys have way too much time on your hands.
No, no, you know, it's just the internet.
Oh.
Oh.
The what?
What? With the world wide web.
Hey, Kristen. Okay, we have everybody except Tim. I hadn't heard if Tim was gonna be here or not, but we'll see. Uh, it is six oh two. Um, so at six oh two, we're gonna call this, uh, city council work session, um, to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Councilmember Gil. Councilmember Little Ale.
Here.
Councilmember Grant. President. Councilmember President King.
President.
Mayor Procham Green.
Here.
Mayor Bobby.
Here.
Please.
Okay, uh, does anybody have anything they would like to add to the agenda? We do have a subtraction order, is that true?
Yes, uh, just so that we all know, Main Street and Ludenville County Economic Development Corporation, uh, they have preliminary numbers and budgets that they would like to meet with. Mayor and I just kind of run over the formatting and what they've got to make sure, uh, we're more on the same page before they present. So if it's agreeable, we will bump them to the October eleventh.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any other changes we would like to make to the agenda? Okay, I think we're good. Um, at this time, housekeeping matters. Black. You're up.
I know that we've been watching great leaving Sixth Street, Second Street, and Pine Street. I'm curious, though. How much is it costing?
Good question. Uh, the approximation right now is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, that's, that's, um.
For all three.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's all. Uh, but, um, we also are gonna share some costs. So once we're done, we're gonna sit down and sit down with utilities individually, I think, one at a time. And talk about what, what their share should be. And I don't know what those numbers are, but they should be significant because two of those streets were their projects. The only, only part we had it was paving once they were done. And so, you know, they need to share in the cost of paving. Uh, for, for Second Street, certainly, because all three utilities were involved in Second Street. And on Pine, all three utilities were involved on Pine. But it was mostly a local sanitation project. And I don't, I won't have numbers for you. Uh, I hope we can sit down, uh, next Tuesday and, and make those calculations and then present to the individual utilities and get their buy-in.
I'm just happy that we had like a even fund, too.
Well, there was only five hundred thousand.
You're welcome. I said, you're welcome.
Anyway, they're gonna pay a significant enough portion that we could get one more street out of. I asked that question and I believe, yes, because I, we were at the point where our window was closing for paving and, you know, we had the paving contractor here. And so I asked Mayor and I was just based on back of an acting calculations, could we get any more streets in this year? And with the eight hundred thousand, I'll remember, if don't, then we can without, so our budget's five hundred thousand. So I think not without, not a street, like we are, they're gonna do some, some more, you know, patchwork and small concrete work here and there, but not.
Right, they have to do concrete work on Pine. We have to do all the pans once they're done paving. And then there's a, there's a bad spot on top of, uh, that, um, Jim Graves did it himself. He was putting in a sewer line into his building. And he tore it all up and he's never fixed it. And now no one can find him. He's not answering his phone, so we're just gonna know, know we're gonna bill him, but, you know. We'll see how that goes.
Still, it's nice to have five hundred thousand dollars in paving fund. You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, you guys, you guys pushed for it, both of you did actually, and it was wise. Uh, you were wise beyond New Year's, which is not easy to do these days. Um, and, uh, and so it's great. Now, in, in this coming budget, we have to decide, that, that's gonna be one of our decision points is, okay, two hundred thousand dollars, don't we get much done?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, and I think so the mayor and I talked a little bit about some preliminary numbers and we, we're probably gonna advocate for more money being the paving fund, only because, you know, is that, is that a priority? For some of the streets it is. I mean, I don't think, you know, whether you're a car or a bicycle, some of those streets or, you know, and then our sidewalks are a big issue, although there is a, um, definitely grant money. Person sidewalks, we might try and get in on, but yeah, it, we, our streets are in that bad of condition, but it's not just moving cars, it's moving everybody.
Yeah, I would reiterate that I think we probably should give some consideration, uh, to the possibility of a valid initiative um, uh, for bonding. Maybe a, a ten-year plan uh, for streets. I don't know. I don't wanna get too far ahead of us. We don't have debt now, but maybe we should in order to get streets paved.
What is the life expectancy of the new paving on Sixth Street? Like, how long should that last?
It lasts fifty years easily. If it's done with quality.
The, the hard part about any of it is just the heat and cold and the heat and cold. So once there's any crack in the asphalt, then it just becomes worse with the water. Water gets in the crack and expands and then it cracks. And so it's, it, yeah.
I would remind us.
It's, it's an art. It's an art and it's hunting your farmer.
These streets were all paved in the sixties. To give you an idea. And if it weren't for all the, the, the utility cuts, the streets would be in decent shape. They're perfect. You know, they might need some repair, might need to pave in places, but they'd be in pretty decent shape, but it's all the utility cuts. So I'm gonna go a bit further and, and I think I've talked to you about this, but, but the, uh,
Yeah, we have.
Uh, about, we're gonna, we're gonna just go to the utilities, uh, 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 Sidewise, Excel already does, they use flow fill. The other utilities do not, and we need to put that in our, in our permitting process. They have to flow fill because that's the problem.
And that was in the streets part, the goal, so we put that in.
Yeah, good. They're gonna hate it because it costs them four times as much.
But if you look at like Eighth Street, that's, it's, it's, it's like speed law because of the, the cracks that are in them. Which is a good thing and a bad thing, I'll just tell you. You know, you're gonna, you, you repave streets and you make them nice and soft and smooth, you're probably gonna get more people going quicker down them. So there is that, but yeah, there are some streets that, that are like a little first source.
Um, anyways, I know we'll be talking about that later on.
I know we will, but I've been to your point, I'm typically that, because that's a favorite thing, so.
It's good.
Yeah.
When?
Yeah, yeah. Just, just in the nick of time.
Uh, in terms of, uh, housekeeping matters, real quick, uh, the, uh, historic preservation commission met today this afternoon, and they did a couple of things that I think were important, uh, that've been talked about for a long time. They went ahead and determined a period of significance uh, for the historic preservation commission and our, and our, and our city, and that is, uh, eighteen sixty to nineteen seventy. Uh, and now they'll, they'll, uh, put that, you know, in the design guidelines and, um, and so now what they'll do is challenge the store, the, the state historic society to do the same, because, because no one has been willing to step up and determine a period of significance in the city of Ludenville all this time. And you made a great point, that now it's definitive. Now, when, when somebody comes to you, yes, they're in the period of significance. And so those, those standards, uh, they have there to be held, those standards. And the second thing is they, um, are working with Christiana on the demo ordinance, the demolition ordinance. They decided to just focus on the one piece where right now, if somebody, and we'll use a downtown building, because that's the scary part. Somebody comes to us and they say, we want to demolish a downtown building. And we said, no, six months later, we have to open it. Unless we buy the building or move the building. That's in our code. You know, so we can't live with that. But nonetheless, so, uh, so Christiana has it on her plate. They've, they've laid out a schedule uh, for consideration of that ordinance change. Um, and I haven't seen the wording yet. Have you? You haven't seen it in a year, have you?
No.
Okay, we'll see what the wording is and see what we think. I'm excited about that because I feel like we've been vulnerable all this time, and we didn't really, I've realized it for years, but getting it changed has been a bit of a knockback. So that's weird.
Um, Tim Bergman made a comment.
Hey, Tim.
Oh, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, City Council. I was just wondering on your comments on the period of significance and things like that, if the current courthouse is included in that.
Great question. The answer is yes. However, it doesn't mean you can't do what you want to do. It just means you have to justify it with the historic preservation commission. Uh, it's true of a lot of houses and things around town. You know, they've given demolition permission, especially if, if a building is not considerably considered historically significant. Um, so I don't think it's really an issue, but yes, you do fall within that period of significance.
Thank you.
Any other housekeeping matters? Okay, thank you. Uh, next, we're, uh, have the budget discussion around revenue. You have the projections in front of you. Um, Donna and Lori and I have been through this and we're uh, hopefully in a position to answer the questions you might have about our, our projections for, um, twenty twenty-three.
And I think what we, you can see that the property tax isn't significantly increased, but as you can see over the years, that's sales tax continues to delight us, and I think we're, the, generally, we've been very our administrations have been very conservative in the budgeting and we haven't really I, I, I think we're still conservatively budgeting based upon, uh, projecting based upon uh, what we've seen went over so far this year, but it, uh, continues to be strong, even though the price of gas has increased, which is my concern over the summer.
I would say this to that point. Last year, we took the boldest move we had ever taken. And we took fifty percent of increased sales tax, uh, and put it in the budget, and even that scared me. And this year, we'll take it about sixty-three or sixty-four percent. We don't know quite yet. Uh, but it's even more aggressive than it was. Uh, but to Lori's point in our conversation, leaving money on the table, we have a lot of needs, just is not a, a good way to proceed.
And I think what we, we did some, um, rough calculations, and I think by the end of twenty twenty-two, we expect to be one point five million dollars.
Probably closer to one point six, but we, yeah.
About one point five or one point six over of the projected revenue for twenty twenty-two. And that, you know, again, was with the increased revenue projections, so, uh, it's been the revenue discussion is a nice revenue discussion to have, and, you know, I think we could go into these budget sessions with dread if we were on the opposite side of, you know, where we are with our, especially sales tax. You can see a lot of, I, I just, you know, being, me being the first, or first time of me being through this, I think we went through a lottery and we're like, let's just keep things the same, you know, the thing, a lot of things weren't increasing substantially, uh, except for the sales tax. So, um, was there anything else that we, we talked about that kind of stood out, uh?
Donna, what, what in your mind stood out? We did reduce some things um, in terms of budgetary considerations.
Yeah, there's nothing substantial on changes that I remember.
What's the highway users' tax on thirty-three fifty, three hundred and thirty-three fifty?
Uh, we actually budgeted one eighteen for twenty-three. Um, the highway users' taxes of, is, is a federal tax. Uh, I mean, a, a federal grant or something like that, money that's given to cities and counties, uh, for the, for the number of roads that we have. And there's a calculation that they have each year. And so Hopte, the county, it's a huge Hopte. How, counting it's like six hundred
They essentially just tell us what it is.
Yeah.
Max, here's the form that I thought, if you wanna see that, that has Ludenville on it.
So this is, this is the, how they break it out.
And that is, uh, so, so even though we received only sixty-two thousand dollars so far this year, we're expecting to get more.
Well, we're going off of that, what they say is you have been in pain. Now, remember, this is only through August of two thousand twenty-two. Let me recite. So everything that says the actual is only through August. Yes, up here it says you're to date through August. Yes, if you see it through the top, it's sixty-seven percent of the fiscal year has elapsed, so. And we get about like the, the last payment we got was just thirteen thousand dollars. So we get somewhere around two, ten and fifteen a month.
Okay, so you're just going on, thank you very much. And then the other question I have is animal control fees. Who's that with? Where, it looks like.
Animal control or animal shelter.
Thirty-three twenty.
Oh, I see, I see, yeah.
We went with, I mean, it seems that like we went twenty-two, fifteen. I know these are small potatoes, but like, we're do those come in rolling as well, Donna?
No, those are what the animal shelter takes in for impounds, um, licenses.
Okay, so, but we're still doing that.
We're on track to, to meet that number, when it appears to be. I didn't notice, when we went over these numbers, Donna, I didn't notice animal shelter. You're showing the county's share to only be ten thousand.
Well, that's a formula. So when we do the animal shelter budget, it'll automatically calculate to be fifty percent of.
Gotcha.
And that's why I kind of highlighted it is because that's kind of a loop point right now.
Also, I, I'd add, and for Jeff and Tim, who may not have been part of the conversation, it used to be, uh, that, that, uh, that the, the county also paid a part of a police officer. Um, you know, uh, as part of, our, part of the, uh, the agreement we had, and, and a couple of years ago, we decided that was just stupid. Uh, because no one will get it valued for that expenditure, and we simply took it out. We took, we took the police officer out of that budget.
I just want to sell capital asset in twenty twenty-two. What were their capital assets that you sold, fifty-five thousand dollars?
Well, we were gonna, we were thinking that we would might sell some of the police vehicles, because we have like fifteen, we had, what? Nine, ten, what, twelve, thirteen of them. So we thought we budgeted that we would sell twenty-five thousand, but we didn't, we didn't sell any of them.
We've had a hard time getting rid of police cars.
I, I think that one thousand dollars is a thousand dollars. We're gonna pay someone to take that vehicle off. And that's more to take on the mission.
Well, for what? The worst car ever be on the road.
Down. I, I, I think, uh, I was just worried it gave me the list one day and.
We know it wasn't a good vehicle. We got it, but it was, it had been an impound vehicle, but it was unclaimed and so it was free until we started fixing it, and then it was so free.
Sounds like a high school shop.
Yeah, it does.
We donated to Colorado Public Radio.
That's a good idea.
Fire Department Chinese Center.
Yeah, they, they'd make a mess of it.
Put some jobs and life on it.
So, uh, just as a matter of perspective, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll approximate, but about four years ago, our total budget was about two point three million dollars. This year, it's gonna push up against five million dollars. Um, it's a big budget. And, and it's good for us. I mean, the, the point is that, that we have come a long ways uh, because of tax revenues and because we're in a position to really do some of the things we need to um, and five years ago, we didn't.
How, I remember previously when our budget took a really big tick up, a lot of it was just passed through grant money. Um, how much of our budget is just passed through stuff now?
Uh, the five hundred and forty-six thousand, you'll see it in there. Uh, but I didn't include that when I talked about the five million. I had already backed that out.
Okay.
Uh, because you'll see the total bottom line budget is five point five oh nine. And then this pass-through grant is five hundred and forty-six thousand. So I was already taking that into account by the explanation.
Okay, thank you.
And if you look, we're not really budgeting here, revenue from a lot of other grants. You look at page two, the second line up, you know, we are pursuing other, other grants. Uh, we're gonna get those and plenty of those, so we're pursuing a transportation transit money. Um, uh, please keep, just put in a grant for, as an animal police officer, uh, salary and training. Now, again, there, there's potentially, well, let's do on the thirtieth, but there's potentially maybe money for some streets grants, so we'll, we're pursuing that, so we can, but.
If you had, if we had a grant writer.
We're working on it.
What do you think, Tim? We all need a grant writer?
Yeah, since twenty twenty.
And a grant administrator.
Yeah.
Because you don't wanna miss reporting on the grant you have.
Any other thoughts or questions on any of this?
And, and Mike, just, like, from the county side, because we also like seeing these revenue and are trying to catch up on decades of deferred maintenance, like, we're really working on trying to do, like, the facilities assessment, investor plan, and sort of that. Asset plan is like, you know, how much do we need to be putting away? Not as though spending each year, but putting away each year to replace police vehicles. Like, you know, what should we do to putting in a fund line item every year? What should we be doing for building maintenance? You know, what, you know, recreation assets that are twenty years deteriorated, trying to get that handled, so we don't go like, ooh, money. Um, you know, and sort of have a, have a plan on, kind of how to, how to peck away at that. So just, and we haven't done it yet, but, you know, uh, to me, that's like calming and helpful budget-wise to sort of not just take a little bit of windfall and start fixing things, kind of ad hoc. Um, and some things are obvious to have to go first, but so again, trying to get that from a year-on-year number with all the big ticket, you know, maintenance and equipment replacement items.
And some of ours in this budget is already the type three and type one, and just, I didn't see the type one in here. I just saw the type three. Did I miss it? No. Oh, that's right, it can't go in the fire department budget. I'm sorry, now I understand. It has to go, it has to go to a different line item. Got it. Is it already in? Have we put it in yet?
We need some work on that. I'm sorry, I thought we were just doing revenue.
Okay, no, I, I, I digress.
I know, I was like, hey, you should revenue.
No, no, I'm sorry. My brain goes a lot of different directions all at once.
I'll shut up.
We're ready for this one. We may not, but I do, so a couple of things. I think there are some departments that are very, uh, i- i- equipment intensive or facility, I mean, obviously all our, you know, have facilities, but I think a facilities assessment would be great. I don't know that we necessarily want the news in front of the building, in this building. But I do think the, you know, the capital improvement plan, you know, the fire department has their capital improvement plan. They're gonna get the consultant to work on one that they can see the police department. You got the vehicles are more new for the police department, so I'm not as worried about.
We've got those on a five release location, so that, that happens automatically on us.
Yeah, you know, but like the same thing for, for streets, but we're, 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 we're working towards that. I would like to see something like that, and you know, I, I You know, but like the same thing for for streets, but we're 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 working towards that, I would like to see something like that, and you know, I. We loaded up our new street department supervisor with a lot so far, so hitting him with a capital improvement plan is their new coming job. But I do think that's something to to get ahead of, is, you know, maybe looking. Two or three years down the road to see what we expect or we need to be planning for, and. Uh it's probably a good idea, but I also think, you know, maybe, said with the facility assessment, I'm not sure. We're gonna like that, since we get on this building, there's so much to work, maybe, that. We've got flooding in the basement, we've got here issues. It'd be a big ticket, I think that that's something that we would definitely need to have granted for. Um so the the county and your A did a complete remodel of their building, which is a similar type of building to this. And we looked it up, and I think the city put in two point five million on a, you know. Five to six million dollar project, so those are big numbers.
Yeah, we need to be looking to Department of Local Affairs for these things, they really are very supportive. Especially at the infrastructure grounds, um like the street department. We're gonna put, we're gonna build a building for the street department, it might be a year after next, but maybe Dowa. Would would do a a fifty percent match on that, which is typical of what they do.
Yeah, those are the kind of things where we're more. We need to piece together money from losses, and I talked with, when I write, I just, when I got here, there was um. Thought I had a social society had the grants available too, and I I tried to chase that for a little while, just because I didn't have it available. But I mean, for something like this, this building, that's the kind of stuff.
Okay, any final thoughts on this uh this revenue?
Before we start spending it.
Okay, Don, thank you for all the hard work on this.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for putting this together.
Okay, uh next up, capital requests, do you have uh some of the capital requests from the different departments?
I do, we have, uh let's see, so I don't know how we wanna, we wanna go.
Let's go each department and just see what they, what they're asking for, and and what's immediate and what's what's projected into the future.
You're right, so we the mayor already alluded to it, we we do have um two departments that are need. Are out outgoing their facilities, and so it's not that we expect we can do. Two facilities now, or at what point, but we have streets department, uh they are outgoing their facility, and the issue is that. They're having to store some of the equipment outside, which decreases the longevity of the equipment, so. It's it's something that can happen, it's just not necessarily something that is a long term. Uh it's not good long term for the equipment, and they've just got some new equipment for the streets department, so. The question on that one is, you know, uh I I can't remember if we did we get any quotes. From the streets department about cost for the for a building.
No, for a building, not yet.
Okay, so we're 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 working on that, the 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 question is, where does it go? Where did we put it? Uh the other, and and the streets firms didn't put it requested for any equipment, did they?
Uh they want a Mack truck and three boxes, uh which they have quotes on that.
Oh, okay.
Uh I don't think, I don't know if they have final quotes on all the boxes, but they have uh they have quotes on the trucks.
Okay, so maybe the thing to do is.
Can you ask one question before we go on the capital request? It's because my brain, I mean, and I don't wanna like throw off the idea of like, how much is like our? Out of five million dollars, what is like our salary and expenses that we? Own, no matter how many capital requests we get, how much do we think we have to play with?
Typically been seventy seven point five percent. Has has been the cost of employees in the budget, so it's it's the line should, but. Now, in terms of, in terms of how we're increasing the budget, and and what we know. We think we may obligated ourselves against, and this is all very approximate. We think we need to to set aside about four hundred thousand dollars for employee, additional employee costs, both. For January first and maybe mid-year, because we don't know what's gonna happen with inflation. So that's just to give you some idea, and this is all very approximate, uh it may be less than that, but. I'm I'm kind of within the worst case scenario, four hundred thousand dollars will be the increase in total payroll, including benefits.
Including like for another mid-year cost of living.
Including the mid-year, that's about the initial hundred thousand.
I I'm just gonna say, I'm not gonna be supportive of that right. I just don't know how much money, I mean, it's it comes down to the point of like, people have to, I mean, we have to. Not just throw my, I think there's other things we can do to incentivize employee retention, so it's just saying, you get another. I mean, just put in, I just did the, I got a bonus this year, it was point zero point nine percent of my salary. That's how good we get it on federal revenue, makes me feel really good.
I can't, I can't make that a point of comparison when we're dealing with a local issue of employee retention.
I'm just saying, average, average benefit for uh uh is five point six percent. For this kind of stuff overall, and I'm just saying.
We're probably about twenty percent.
Yeah, and so that's.
You know, but that includes PTO, includes everything. Like out the works, but it's probably twenty percent.
I know we're not there yet, you're like. How much are we spending on salary and expenses? How much are we definitely taking out? And then how much money do we have for us?
So so I think you're getting, well, I think you're getting ahead, because what we are trying to do first is, we wanna talk about. So this this session is talked about capital, prioritizing capital improvements. Each one of those things may end up in the department budgets, if we decide that they're a priority. So when you look at each of the, you know, each of the departments comes forward and talks about their budget, that's when we can, you know, debate the overall cost of. You know, salary versus equipment versus supplies and all that stuff, I think. Uh we've, we've said it before, and I'm gonna make the pitch really hard for this, is it doesn't really matter what the city pays for. If you don't have the people, and what we're finding is, we're not able to compete with the local label force. For, I you know, I'll just give you the point, we have had zero, zero applicants. For the human resources director position, zero. So what the burden is, is that work is falling on the people who are currently here, and if those people leave, we've got a problem. Uh I I mean, I really do think that we're not out of triage, we've we've talked about. The staffing models, and it seems like we're treading water, and we make progress, and sometimes we go backwards. If, I mean, there's other things we can certainly do, I would like that, there's my idea, when we get to employee compensation, some other things I'd like to talk about. You know, whether we can offer education benefits or structure or PTO differently, I think those are the things we can look at. But the bottom line is, if people can't pay their rent, they're gonna look for a different job. Um what we found with some positions is that part-time work, just people won't take part-time jobs, they can't survive on this count on part-time. What they do is they work part-time for us until it can get a full-time job. So full-time jobs with benefits, I I mean, I I think looking at the pay for that, we need to be able to pay competitively enough. We don't have to pay a premium, I don't think we're paying, I don't think we're overpaying, I don't think we're paying premium. I don't think we're, you know, a luxury place to work, I think we're barely keeping pace with the market. And uh we just talked about this today, that summer, it's easy to move away. And, you know, I don't think we're getting the candidates we should be getting for, like you say, the. The animal shelter, human resources director, which, you know, you could think it's a a lot of other things, but I think it's potentially pay.
Yeah, thanks, I I don't wanna necessarily go down this rabbit hole of salaries quite yet, but I am just quickly interested to know if we have. Do we routinely do exit interviews for the people who do leave, and if so, what reasons do they get?
Well, yes, I did do an exit interview with um one person, and she left with a pay. Yeah, she left of South County, and and I I I, chief and I sat down with her and said. What can we do to keep you? Don't answer right now, think about it and let us know, and it was, it was just a big difference in pay. Um and we, I, you know, I I I, we've had that discussion with other people as well, and I. I hesitant to just throw money at an employee to keep them to to stay. Because that's not fair to other employees that are here and have them threatened to leave, then they still get the same pay. Uh so, you know, I let that employee know that we were working on a pay raise, and uh you know, the offer was in hand, and it was a lot more money, and shit up. We lost a good employee.
Um you know, so Caitlin has a has a note up there. And and I would say, I I'm all for paying people properly, I'm not for overpaying them. And I also don't think pay is is always the answer. Um I I think you you give them a good work environment, uh you treat them respectfully, you do all the all the right things. And then if they leave, then you did your best, you know, but there's always so much you can do. Uh you know, just throwing money at people, uh to Max's point, uh is not always the answer.
And one last point I wanna make on the salary is that, yes. Throwing money at people to stay, but or, you know, just purely incentivized more type, the problem is, when we get down to just a couple people. Who are left, then there's a huge burden on them, and we've had that burden at city hall for too long. And and I think that we're risking burnout from multiple departments, not just administration, but some of the other departments where. The people who we want to keep, you know, we're penalizing them by not giving them the help that they need. And they're working, you know, way, way, way too many hours, and what if they? You know, so essential services, you know, gets to a point where you, I wonder if we were just gonna have to put a sign up on city hall, and. You know, we'll close on Fridays, just can't, we we just, we can't do it. So, anyway, more and more.
Let me ask you real quick, Tracy, any thoughts?
Any thoughts regarding pay?
Well, just in general, the conversation's rambled a bit, but just wanna make sure you you're not left behind.
No, I I appreciate that, I'm just taking in information tonight, so.
All right, thank you. Okay.
So I think uh what I was gonna do on the capital. Requests. I was just kinda trying to try and keep track a little bit of the departments. And what the requests were, so um building. We, I thought um Jen was gonna try and get some ballpark quotes for building, we don't.
He is, I mean, I I just haven't seen him, uh he also needs to get a quote for repairing roof. On the current building.
That quote's in there.
Oh, quote is in there?
Yeah, that John Martinez.
Oh, it is.
Okay, I didn't see that.
Oh, my heart just stopped. You know, well, the quotes we're getting there, some of them are so completely over the top, you just go, are you kidding me? Well, we're not getting many quotes for anything, and and so it's really difficult to look at this and take it seriously. But then what choice do you?
Okay, so no quote for the building. And when you say building, you are talking about a possible new streets department. The all-occupancy building.
Maybe not all-occupancy, the old buildings wouldn't go away, I mean, those are still functional buildings if they have a roof, and um so that's still storage, but. I do need, they're they're completely out of room.
And and we'll get to this with the the animal shelter too, because we've explored different options of animal shelter, where we look at modules or something like that, it's pretty bad. You know, with something like that, just to keep something, you know, some of the equipment out of the animals. You know, I don't think it needs to have plumbing, it may not need to have, maybe that electricity, but we're we're gonna. But that's my question, is it for equipment or is it for human people to use?
It's all the above, it's it's, it has, it probably has more to do with where you keep your equipment, how you maintain your equipment. Uh with quality, those sorts of things, it it really is probably more about the equipment than the people.
Is it, I know that we were talking before, and I know we're talking about capital requests, is there a way to combine? These things and find a new facility, and that property there on Sixth Street is worth a lot of money, if you were to.
It's actually a good point, right?
Well, we had, yeah, one of the things we had talked about was, is, you know, the the outgrowing facilities in a lot of ways, and would it just make sense? There's two, the one building, and have it, or acquire a couple modules, and have it be overflow or other. We've outgrown city hall, we're gonna share offices upstairs, you know, eventually, when we got a human research person, but yeah, I mean, it may make sense to. Financially, look at one building and figure out how to make it share.
To the commissioner's point earlier, I mean, if there's like a way to um. Patch things that I would need to do, so let's say there's a weekend group, and then actually do some sort of facilities master plan. In fiscal year twenty three, that might set our budget and something up for the future, not, I mean. We we need to figure out, like, all options on the table, I mean, we're we're going to have this justice center down the way, which is gonna be for the police department, insurance department. Courthouses, that's fantastic, what are we gonna do about our street department and our, you know, other other grants, and so I'm just wondering if. You know, instead of putting a new building on a piece of property that's worth very, a lot of money, and very, you know, I mean, within the downtown corridor. Um where, I mean, I. I just think that there might be some value in actually putting money on like developing like a a plan.
We actually have land up on Eleventh Street, uh you know, the 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 cash is there, uh the office of emergency management, they have a couple buildings there. Now, the tower's been built right behind that, it's kind of the middle area, it's a, you know, really odd location, but nonetheless, we have been lots. On the other side of that block, and then further up from there, I think we have uh ten or eleven lots. Some of which will be encroached on by the tower, so we might have like four and four. Um so there could be a lot of land available.
I'm just thinking of ideas, like, you know, like the animal shelter is nice, because it has people going down the mill about, but like. Does the county have uh use for that? Can we put a parking lot there for people who are using the mill about with a kiosk? Uh can it be a recreation hub for people, instead of having people parking in front of the L storage? And in front of the county buildings, we create that as an uh as a gateway. And remove the location for the animal shelter, and then somewhere else that can survive, maybe. I'm just throwing out ideas, I'm just saying, like, if we're gonna really do this, I mean, you're in place, you're in place, we have new people coming in. We have, I mean, this is our time, like, we have increasing revenue, how do we look at this more holistically than saying? We need another structure to cover our building, our 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 places, our our, I mean, our equipment. Um that's already rank impact, I mean, that built that area for where the street department's path. Um how do we look? Holistically at the problem, and see if there's other opportunities when we kind of just go to that thirty thousand foot above.
Okay, let's uh let's get back to individual capital requests.
Yeah.
So for the street department, we we need to fix a roof, the only bid we have is sixty two thousand eight hundred. Uh we see if we can get a better bid than that for a roof. Um also, in terms of a building, I think that's at least a two-year proposition to plan, uh it's a Max's point. Put together a plan, um the Mack truck uh with the two extra boxes is about. Uh seventy five to eighty thousand dollars a year over a five-year amortization. That's that's a very rough calculation, but if that were to go in the budget this year. Um then that's about what it would add to what to that budget.
And what is, so I didn't receive there any of this information from the streets.
Oh, I thought, no, that.
So, I asked for it and I didn't get it, so um I don't know, what is the backdrop for?
Um it is a a drop, it's a, it's what's called a hook drop, we have uh two back hook drops, but they're big. This would be a smaller hook truck, and so it would have several boxes, it would, it would come with a rock box, it's called a rock box. For dirt and gravel and asphalt and stuff like that, and almost all trucks do come with the rock box, they would also like a service box, cuz they don't. Right now, their service truck is like a hundred years old.
So how much is the total cost of this?
Um I think the total cost is under three hundred thousand dollars, do you have a total cost?
I don't think so.
I don't think I would either.
Is that total for the roof leak plus?
No, 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 has nothing to do with the roof, this is just.
Just.
This hook truck with two boxes. And so, yeah, the two boxes, they also need what's called a vacuum truck, it would be one of the boxes. The nice thing about a hook truck is then you get all these other basically attachments for way less than buying a truck. Um, but they also need a vacuum truck, wh- where they clear out uh, the storm sewers.
It's, the vacuum truck is different than the Mack truck?
It, it's a box on the Mack truck, there's a Mack truck and then there are three attaches.
Okay, so repairing the roof, sixty-two thousand eight hundred, the Mack truck with two boxes around three hundred thousand dollars?
About. Yeah, it'd be amortized over five.
I understand, full, total ask, if you're talking about the capital investment, like three hundred thousand dollars.
Eighty points five is four hundred thousand.
Four hundred, yeah. He said seventy-five, but, but just four. And, and.
What happened to my name? Okay, sorry.
Don't need to have your mouth.
No, that's good, that's good.
Okay.
That's a good problem.
Okay, so uh, and we have uh. Caitlin on the line, uh, I did receive a request from the animal shelter and Caitlin, uh. Do you want me to go over it, or would you prefer to go over it?
Um, you can go over it, I just wanted to let council know that on the thirtieth, so this Friday. Um, we are having someone come up from Pike's, um, Peak Humane Society who does shelter building designs. So I will have more feedback, more estimates at that time, um, that I can give more accurate numbers on.
Okay, so the first thing to talk about is the, um, so I've been working with Caitlin probably since I started on the need. Uh, we did this with all the departments, I visited them, got a tour, kind of got a sense of how much space they have and what their needs are, just the same with the streets department. So we have another department, it's needed more space, uh, the shelter is um, really not sufficient. That, and so we talked about a couple of options for the shelter. A couple of, um, you know, obviously, expanding the current building is expensive. Um, doing a modular type of the building is something that we talked about because, um. Caitlin has done some measurements on the current property that we own, so it would be like a metal warehouse building that could be divided into multiple rooms. Um, Caitlin's got a quote here, eighty-eight thousand dollars for a sixty by seventy metal shell. And so the issue is that do you use that for, you know, sheltering animals? Uh, we talked about that, it, then there may be some issues with hooking up utilities and needing plumbing and needing electricity. And we use it for office space.
Sixty by seventy was huge.
Yeah, Caitlin.
Yeah, that wasn't for our specific location, that was just one that they recommended for animal shelters, yeah.
Ah, okay, good, what was the size that you and I had talked about for that would fit in the measurements that you had taken? I think there was a.
Off the top of my head, I think it was like a thirty, it was almost the same size as our current building. So like thirty by thirty-ish.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to interrupt for a second, Tim has his hand raised, Tim. Go ahead.
Sure, thanks, Mayor, I just wanted to point out that um, like ninety-eight percent sure that the animal shelter is county property.
It is.
Okay, just wanna make that clear.
Let's move it.
Do you wanna put a building on it, Tim?
I, I don't know. I just wanted to make sure that if you're talking about additions or expanding where the animal shelter's at, that. Um, that's our, our facility.
Gotcha, yes, that's, I, thank you for reminding me about that, yeah, so. I think that those are the considerations is, you know, expanding the current building is expensive. And I think building, you know, looking at the, the, the options are, you know. How much time and money does the city and for an animal shelter, like the county wanna contribute for something like this? There are out of space, as is the streets department, the street department is purely a city department. But, you know, the question is, you, you get a part of land to build a brand new building, that's super catalyzed. Do you use existing land and expand the existing building? Or do you use, you do a modular, add some modular? And when Caitlin and I were talking about it, obviously, just adding a modular to the current space is one of the most. Uh, fast and least expensive options to expand their space. Uh, so that was the discussion and um. On that, so, and this is where we have, you know, this is where the council gets to decide what, you know, what are, what are the bigger priorities for capital improvements? For any of the departments, or, oh, did you?
No, it's true.
Okay.
I think it's really hard to consider priorities when we have all of these things that have no quotes or estimates attached to them.
I mean, I will say one thing is definitely gonna be able to fix, and that's an overrated. Fix it, we want to preserve the equipment as much as we can. Uh, cause it might cost us a lot now, but it's certainly gonna cost us way more later. I'd hate to be in council with that.
I would say this relative to the animal shelter. Um, I think the, a modular on the, I'll call it the west side of the animal shelter makes the most sense. Now, the cost of quoting a building doesn't, as you pointed out, doesn't cut it. You're gonna have to wire it, you're gonna have to plumb it, it has to, to meet uh, certain animal shelter requirements. Uh, it has to have certain uh, um, aspects to it that are animal shelter centered. Uh, however, if it is only office space. If all you're trying to do is move the office space over there and free up more space than the animal shelter, maybe that's a different conversation. But we need it, we need a, a quote that is all encompassing, that is a totality of what it would cost to do that.
I, I think we're looking too focused on the animal shelter once again, I mean, this is what I do for, for the government, right? Is massive improvements on national forces and lands. Pretty much any single one of our permanent holders has to have a master development plan. Before they can even build anything on national forces and lands. They can't just go up and say, I wanna put a lift there, and they say, okay, put a lift, I wanna put a transmission line there, okay, I wanna put, okay, go right ahead. Right, they go in, they have to create a comprehensive, mastered development plan. On what it looks like and what they're gonna build out, and then, you know, for the future in ten years, or even longer. And saying, this is what we need, and this is how we're gonna get there, right? And then they prioritize from there. I strongly besides the need to do on the, the new building roof. Discourage us from just shooting from the hip on these types of improvements when we have opportunities. We actually need upstairs for more space, you have a need for the animal shelter, you have a need for the street department, the fire department is taken care of. The most part, cause they have an station, the police department is taken care of, because they have a new justice center. What about the remaining essential services with our city? I mean, if we're gonna stay there and just continue to slap up metal buildings as a. Like the county, the only county, I mean, this is it, I mean. Do we really wanna have a metal building as our animal sheltering? Or do we wanna create something that is nice for the employees to go into? Right, that's an actual facility that people feel welcome in, both for the public and for our employees. I'm gonna say that I'm, I'm pushing, I, I mean, I think that these are great ideas, but I think it has to be speak in an actual plan on what this looks like.
Let me do this, because you raised a good point, and the one person who needs to be a lot of people talking in this conversation is Caitlin, because she's the manager. And I think she can speak to the need for what the employees need and what the public needs. Um, so Caitlin, I, I'd like to hear what you have to say, because I think your voice is important in this conversation.
Sure, I don't wanna take up, um, too much of your all's time, but um, again, I will have. Um, I'm spacing on his name, but he will be up on Friday, and so. This is exactly what we're gonna talk about, so that we're not just having a temporary fix, but we have something more long-term. That we can use in the future, especially while Leadville continues to grow. The biggest need currently is, we have no isolation area or no separation from our stray animals and adoptable animals. So that serves a huge quarantine and medical concern when we have strays coming in from the community that we don't know. If they're bringing in something contagious or affect infectious. And especially with isolation, that's a state thing that we have to have. Um, in twenty twenty, I, before I came on, I worked with Debbie and Pacfa. To alleviate that violation, so we do have an agreement with Dr. Lynnameyer. However, his isolation area can really only contain cats or small dogs, we could not have any. Border collie plus sized animals in there.
Well, I appreciate Max's point, but also, to some degree, I'd love it if we had to be reactive, but to some degree. We do have to be reactive, it's a nice kind of long-range problem, but it's also our job to solve problems. And uh, we, we can't solve problems in the ten-year plan. Solve ten, problem ten years from now, but you can't solve twenty, twenty-three problems in ten years.
Yeah, you have a short need and a long-term goal, but we need to have some sort of master development plan in place to where we wanna go.
I would say it'd be great to have a master development plan, but we don't need that uh, to react to short-term needs.
Uh, short-term fixes is not a plan, it's, what I'm saying is, is like, you ask any other municipality. You think they're just building justice centers and police departments slipshot and firing it off? Like, think about Frisco, Breck, and Sled, you know, this, like, these people are like, I mean, are we, I mean, I could be wrong, but like. I just, I just think that, like, I totally get Caitlin's point, and I'm not saying that she doesn't need an isolation area for, for cats and dogs. What I'm saying is, is like, we can do both. You can actually put money towards an actual facility plan, looking to the future, and also do what we need tomorrow. At the same time, but I think diverging some a- assets. Putting it towards capital improvements that are needed today. And looking to the future is probably a balanced approach you need to take, right?
That's what we're trying to do tonight, and I, I think you, you know, I, I think you're identifying some communities that have resources. Beyond the, what we have, uh, you're, you're pretty much looking at the staff who can put this together. I mean, it's a master facility plan, I, I don't, I'm looking around the room, like, who, who's gonna do that? Okay?
I mean, that's what, I mean, how many people do put together?
I don't disagree, Paul, I think that it's really smart to look at it in a holistic way, and it's probably gonna save us money to, in the long term. To have a master plan of, this is what our community is, it's trajectory to grow. This is what it's gonna look like, this is what the needs are most likely gonna be, we should meet those needs long-term. But I also think that what we are being presented doesn't really, like, I don't think that's gonna be influenced by that plan. So I don't, like, I, I, I'm having a hard time seeing why we can't, like, well, obviously for vegetarian reasons. But say we do build um, a quarantine area for dogs, and that's the immediate fix now. We can say we're gonna do that, and then eventually, when we have different conversations about the future and what our master plan's in. When we have a planner, um, fully situated with full staff, we can have those talks. I, I, I just don't think that now is the proper time for it. And I think that what they are asking for is for the immediate needs, not necessarily long-term.
I think this report for sixty by seven modular building. About eighty-eight thousand dollars, not including water, sewer, electricity, or any internal improvements. That to me is.
I didn't have time to contact a contractor, I was notified about this and had a brief amount of time to put that together. So after I talked to the CEO on Friday, who's coming up to visit, I will then be able to contact and definitely get more details. So my intention here, I apologize, was not to present a full plan, because I did not have time to get, to be able to contact contractors. Or other people who design shelters. So again, this was just for me, in my department, it was just a, these were the prices that we talked to people about. And of course, I know it's a metal shell building, that's not gonna come with walls and plumbing and all of that stuff, I have to still work to find in those details.
Yeah, and I think, you know, Max has got a good point, we, we need to work on strategic planning, we probably need to work on, you know, I, I think we need a capital improvement plan. But that's what we're trying to do tonight, we're trying to chip away at that. You know, I got here in February, we did a quick and dirty, what are our goals for twenty twenty-two? And it wasn't perfect, but we, we, we put it together as best as good, we've been trying to accomplish that. We had the goal setting for twenty twenty-three, none of these things are a surprise, they were on the list of goals for, for twenty twenty-three. And, and so now we're trying to, you know, look at just what the capital, not everybody's goals. But what are the capital needs and, and prioritize them? And again, I'm not sure we need an exact dollar amount to prioritize some of these things, I think we can look at. You know, we, we just, Mayor just made a really good point, you know, it's gonna be a couple of years before these buildings maybe come around. Or we could do a modular in the short term and look at doing something longer term. I think the discussion tonight is to try and come up with a capital improvement plan. I don't know that we're gonna come up with the exact plan tonight, the idea is to discuss priorities. And, you know, it's, it's, each department was asked to give us as much information as they could before tonight, and obviously, we're not gonna have perfect information.
Well, I know departments are, are kind of tasked with giving us, okay, here's what I need in twenty twenty-three, which is what we should be considering tonight. If there's a longer range plan, then we should put that together, but we're not putting that plan together tonight. Tonight, we're working on the twenty twenty-three budget and, and how these capital requests may impact that budget. Now, if they have longer range goals in here, that's great, but that, that's a different conversation.
Yeah.
So the need is, your streets department roof leak fix and a potential building to store current equipment. And the need for the animal shelters, some sort of way to figure out how to meet the quarantine necessities for.
I can say, almost to a certainty, there's no way to meet the street department's goal of having a building in twenty twenty-three.
Right.
Uh, that, that's a longer range conversation. Um, so they're gonna have to, you know, get by for a year, two or three, I don't even know, you know. When that might come to fruition, but it is something we should be considering long range.
Yeah, and that's why we have this discussion, is that I don't, you know, I don't think any of these requests should come as a huge surprise, because they should have been included in every of these goals. But, you know, I think that trying to figure out the longer range plan. Uh, and, you know, Max has got a good point, if, if we're not, we shouldn't be thinking just in compartments. If we're looking at new facilities, is it more hazard effect, cost effective to get a bigger facility that can be flexible with different departments? Question really is, what do we need to do for twenty twenty-three? Um, you know, the shelter is completely out of space, so if we wanted to do something in twenty twenty-three for the shelter, just talking about that. I think, you know, Caitlin and I talk about it sometimes with modular space, which she's gonna get a quote on as a good idea. Uh, remember that the, uh, the animal shelter has money from the post estate that was left to them. And I think that's twenty-six thousand.
I was gonna twenty-eight, but you may be right, we used about three thousand, a little over three thousand or something, what do we? What, does anybody remember what we used that for?
Cat condos.
Ah, it was the cat condos, thank you, so we've used a little bit of it.
Yeah, and I did double check, because we had a question about that, uh, what can, can that be used for? Um, I did get a copy of the um, will and uh, or, or the request. And it's just limited for use of, for the animal shelter, but it's not like you have to make an account of improvement or whatever, but, but I think it makes sense to use.
And there's thirty thousand in there.
Is it real? Uh, Tim, you go first and then Henry.
I was just wondering, I mean, as you're talking about why the uh. You know, if the animal shelter is out of space, maybe what, what's upstream, why is the animal shelter out of space, or there are things that can change, whether enforcement or. Other programs that the city could do, it was just, that was just my thought, um, but thank you for letting me ask.
It's an interesting question, I think enforcement would probably fill it more rather than less, it's just, just a thought.
I think it's the logistics of Tim, of the quarantining, is that we don't have a way, it's, it's, it is space in the sense. But it's not that, you know, the shelter is quote unquote full, it's that when you have an animal. It's that when you have an animal, you need to quarantine from the animals that are there to be adopted. There's not enough space to do that. So yes, enforcement would help, but you still may have an animal, one animal that's waiting to be adopted. And one animal comes in that has to be quarantined, we have issues with that.
It sounded like it was just meeting that need of, we need a space where it's not considered. Um, at least that's what the ask sounded like to me.
Yeah, so I would also add, like, national capacity for standards as well as state standards have changed. Since the shelter was created, so we do have double sided dog kennels. Typically, you can close a kennel, store another dog on the other side, have up to twelve dogs in the dog room. That's no longer regulation. They should have access to both front and back so that they're not using the bathroom where they're also sleeping. So that's limited some of our space as well as, you know, the isolation that was brought up. It's just not up to code. The old isolation did not have separate air filtration, et cetera, et cetera.
Uh, Caitlin, thank you. I would I would say this uh real quick. When you talked to 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 this person on Friday about giving some sort of approximation of a of additional space. Uh, I think you have to really take into account what what space you have there uh in that county yard. So uh, you're not gonna be able to exceed that because we don't have another space right now. Uh, and so it's gonna have to be, I I have to say somewhat limited. Uh, there's not a lot of space there.
It needs to fit in Tim's space.
Got it.
Uh, okay.
Uh, we we had uh, we had Dana had a comment.
Yeah, I I'm just sorry to switch the topic back to streets, but is the Mack truck that they're requesting? An additional Mack truck to the one that we're currently on our third year of a five year lease payment on?
It is, but it would replace a back truck that they would sell. They they would, they would sell their oldest Mac. Um, I don't even know what your model is, but uh, it's it's not in great shape.
I thought they were gonna sell the Little Red.
That's what I thought. Oh, Little Red's international. I'm sorry. I misspoke then. So they're gonna, but they're gonna sell one of their small trucks. This is a smaller unit, not like our bigger back trucks, but then it it's well suited to these other smaller boxes.
I I mean, then if just throwing it out there, I mean, if we are gonna sell it, then we should add that to the list of capital sales in the revenue.
And we can buy what it's worth. It's not worth much.
And then my, thank you.
Gotta be worth more than Jeep Liberty, and we listed that.
It is.
My other question, maybe I I I just can't find it, but is our commitment toward the Justice Center, our annual commitment? On the budget anywhere?
No.
No.
Why?
That that won't, that won't come into into budget consideration until, correct me if I'm wrong, until such time. As the Justice Center is built, but.
I think that's right. I will check on that for sure.
We'd like to know.
Okay, cool. I I thought I thought we were doing something next year, but maybe I'm 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 wrong. Thank you.
Oh, I I will, I should know that. I might don't. I'm sorry.
Tim, do you know the answer to that?
I think on the term sheet, we. Committed to an upfront uh commitment. And then we committed to um some type of contribution with the county percent to their funding.
Yeah, I mean, I think what what I've from the terms sheet is that like whatever, whatever financing terms that we get in terms of, you know, it's a twenty or twenty five years. You know, the payment schedule, the interest rate, et cetera, we would just apply that to the. City, you know, to everything the city doesn't pay upfront. If that makes sense.
Uh, it does make sense. I'm not quite sure how that would work, but nevertheless, I I do remember the contract was a hundred thousand dollar contribution upfront.
Yeah.
Does everybody remember that?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's about three hundred thousand dollars a year.
Correct.
With flexibility of being able to pay it at our pace, in the sense of paying more. But that's like the the minimum.
Yeah, that would be the minimum.
And it said the term sheet, and again, this is the term sheet. We maybe we need to negotiate the actual IGA, but we entered into the agreement based upon the term sheets. It's cities contribution can be a combination of upfront funds and an annual installment payment or just an annual installment payment. Um, so the city's annual installment payment shall be calculated by using the same interest rate and payment duration as the county C R P terms.
So this is not gonna impact our twenty twenty three budget.
A hundred thousand dollars will.
Yeah.
But 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 we we have to decide whether it's actually in the budget or that's a general fund expenditure.
Okay.
We we we've just started working with the underwriting team and bond counsel. And again, I'm sorry, I should know the answer to like what the earliest time payment. Let's start. I'll find that out.
I'd appreciate it.
But maybe not just for your twenty three.
It's February or March. February or March is when we should be done with the underwriters.
Yeah, but we should be able to find out sooner when like what the payment schedule, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And we agreed to make an earnest money deposit of a hundred thousand dollars, which we applied to the city's contribution, blah, 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 but. County hasn't asked for that yet, so.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering, since we're doing capital requests, if we have this hundred thousand dollar thing floating around that. May or may not land this year, it could.
That's a good point. I I think Council on Agreement is right. We should probably put this hundred thousand dollars in this year's capital request. Okay, adding that.
Unless we simply take it out of the general fund and don't put it in the budget, those are, those are viable options.
That's what we've done with prior capital requests, though, right?
Well, it depends on the request. You're right, yes. No, no, and I'm saying it wouldn't be in this budget. It'd be a capital request that comes from the general fund.
Yeah, my only point was that if it's out there, it might affect how we prioritize our current capital requests.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna move this along. It's already uh, you know, seventy, seven, twelve, I know. We could, we could be here all night, but. Did you order pizza?
No, I didn't take so.
Moving on from the animal shelter, so that the shelter had a uh shelter expansion request, and then the other request was for a vehicle. Um, shelter is if there is. Well, actually, let me finish my sentence because I think that you'll realize that Jeep Liberty is not being sufficient. Because uh, its shelter does not have a vehicle large enough to evacuate all the shelter animals if needed to evacuate. Um, seeing Jeep Liberty, it might not fit.
I don't think that that's a necessary.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, I I. I'm putting the request out there. This is a request. We're we're listing the requests from each department. So we can decide that that's not a priority. Um, I'd like to hear from Caitlin about that request, and maybe you can explain the need better than I can.
Yep, so thankfully, we don't have too many evacuations up here, um, but this spring, there was a lot of. Um, collaboration with emergency management and our vehicle would fit three crates in that SUV. So we do have a list of community members who could transport animals if needed. However, the majority of our people who volunteer also have their own animals. So if there were to be a fire in Leadville Lake County, we would need to get the animals out of the shelter. So that we could have an empty shelter to intake other potential animals that are loose during a fire. Or other emergency situation, and we would not have a vehicle that can accommodate the animals in our care to safely evacuate them.
I see the the likelihood of of evacuating animals from the animal shelter during a fire event as incredibly unlikely. First of all, there's no building around there. There's nothing around them to burn. So solar panels, a county yard with a bunch of trucks. And Meadowbell Trail and 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 Twelve Street. I don't, I don't get it.
That wasn't, that wasn't the point. She said we need to move the current animals in the shelter out to take the animals that are. Essentially in the, you know, in the community. I mean, someone's.
Then there's not a shelter or a vehicle big enough to deal with it.
To get the animals currently in the shelter?
There was a fire. If there was a fire, we would need to transport.
Okay, so for shelter, for shelter practices, you need to transport your current adoptable animals out. So we do, we are working on an M O U with both Summit County and Cheepee County that if something were to happen, they would take half of our animals. Um, or they could take all of them if they're able to come towards us. But for shelter practicing, you need to get your animals out so that you will have an empty facility. For the animals and families that are impacted by that emergency.
I mean, old weed of infinity.
But hey, okay, it's a request. Well, you know. Um, I, the, doesn't the county have some old vans that they're they're looking for an option to get rid of? First of all, we trade to a Jeep Liberty for a van.
We have a big M R.
At what?
Mine was just an armored person.
Oh, yes, you do. That's right. That's funny.
Cause I think it's more expensive to fix it enough to move it than the space it's talking.
Oh, I'm serious. I I, don't you guys have some some vans that are not in use now? Okay, nevermind. Just thought like we, well, last.
Where I, my proposal to the board is to sell everything that we're not using. No more hoarding in Lake County.
Good luck. So Tim, Tim, having heard the need, do you have something that you, whether or not it's, you know, a quote unquote van? Do you have something you think might fit that size?
No, but between Public Works and the Streets Department, we both do. But maybe Hal, maybe Chief Edwards can look at the ten thirty three program uh to see if there are trucks available.
Um, that's a good, that's actually a great suggestion, yeah.
Yeah, that, so I did look at the ten thirty three program because Chief Daly had recommended it does have to be law enforcement. So it could not be owned by the animal shelter is the issue is the police department can try and pursue it and they'd have to be the custodian.
And and if there were uh under the auspices of the Animal Patrol Officer.
Well, that's true. Actually, that's true. That's a good point. Thanks, Tim. I, cause I have looked at that, was, you know, that is an opportunity. And so I think I even mentioned it to Caitlin too, and we looked into it and. But maybe that's, so maybe that's an idea of looking into that for an animal control officer and having that. The ten thirty three program, the fire department has been successful with that.
I would be fine with an M O U with another Lake County or little um organization. That has a vehicle big enough for us to put crates in.
Well, we're talking about maybe availing ourselves of such a vehicle, either, you know, maybe. To the county if they have an extra vehicle or through the ten thirty three program, uh, which is pretty fantastic. Uh, program.
Is that, I mean, like, the Sheriff's Department has a big transit transit van. I mean, we like.
I think you have to move the humans too. In a fire.
So we have to evacuate all the people and all the animals in the vehicles? I'm I'm thinking they they don't make a van big enough. I just don't know.
I mean, do we really need like a van that's gonna sit there? I mean. I I think that I imagine that we should be able to find some type of M O U one, like. Use the job. This isn't used often, this vehicle, in the case of an emergency. Or like write a contract with A W or someone with construction van. I I think.
Well, also, you know, things like the senior center has three vans and one of them, they don't use at all.
I mean.
Can't go upward. That's a, that's actually a really good idea, just having a low you in place for using it in an emergency situation. I don't know. Just trying to think of ways to put this off on the counter so we don't have to worry about it.
I think that that makes the most sense, unless it makes sense to like purchase a new vehicle, but trying to find some way to hit that need the same. We use this vehicle often, but in the case of an emergency or, you know, somewhat often, in the case of an emergency, you can use it to transport. That's because we're not gonna be using it.
Yeah, I was just thinking in the sense of like, we we're thinking of a van, but I mean, an old school bus or something. That just seems like. That Caitlin just needs the space for some crates.
Right.
So you get a school bus and pick up the seats or something like that, you know?
True.
Right? I mean, again, it just has to work that one moment. You know, okay.
All right. Uh, next up, Leadville Police Department. What was your next one?
Well, that's fine.
Do we have any um? Request from the police department? I'm I'm seeing the goals, but I'm not seeing specific requests in here for any capital.
Our police chief cannot join us tonight. He's under the weather. So, uh, I.
That's a capital.
Of the first leg.
Yeah, I I didn't get ever across for capital.
Okay, I I think that, you know, a lot of the things that they may be looking for. For fit of the budget, like training, new software, they've talked about some updated software. Uh, for data acquisition and reporting. Uh, I don't think those are capital requests when you.
Yeah.
That's all it occurs to me.
Correct. So, you know, you remember from the goals that uh, chief wants to hire an animal patrol officer and putting in grant for that. The other is case tracking software, so we can not just patrol, but patrol knowing what types of crimes happen in what is various. And that could not, I don't, I'm not a accountant, but I'm not sure that that's considered capital. So, um, I think. We can move on.
Um, I've got these goals, but they don't actually mention a department, so I'll just guess. Um, this one says twenty twenty two city of Leadville goals, uh, just like affordable housing. I think we've, we've taken a giant step in that direction.
Might be our roles.
Oh, no, this is twenty twenty two goal recap.
Oh, it is. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, here's, you can, you can go over those.
No. Oh, here's what you, let's go down to fire department. So the fire department indicated they weren't gonna have a lot of capital requests this year. Uh, they had a number of capital requests in the past years, and we weren't fortunate enough to get them some nice equipment. Um, so Chief Daly is on vacation, uh, but he wanted to convey that he didn't have a substantial capital request. He put a uh, a booklet together, a lot of things, but that really the only capital request. Um, we saw in it was, I think something that can fit in, and I was already budgeted for this year. They wanted to get some new blinds and um shades for the current fire vent, fire station. Fire station. And I think that actually the mayor and I talked, I think it actually is already potentially, I talked with chief, it's potentially already in its budget for twenty twenty two. Uh, Mayor, did you decipher this document?
I I I never looked at it again. I think that's a future goal. The ladder truck just passed all of the inspections. I mean, at some point, it's a nineteen eighty eight. We probably have to replace it. But on the other hand, it's functional. We only really ever use it within about. Five block area downtown and maybe in the rail yards in the future where you have to reach high with the ladder truck. It it extends a hundred and five feet, um, which is, which is pretty good. So right now, the ladder truck is a functional piece of equipment that we almost never use. Um, but it's it's like to replace, it's like one point two million. Yeah, so.
Drag it out with ropes if we need it.
Or or maybe burrows. That would be very a little thing to do.
Oh, that's funny.
Okay, uh, and the other thing in there was that they they, he did talk to me a little bit about maybe uh replacing one of the brush trucks.
Yeah, that was one of the other.
And uh, the brush trucks are, they're aging, um, and I I told him I think he should ask for that in this budget. Um, I think we're probably gonna have the money to consider it. It's not a terribly expensive piece of equipment. And amortizing it over five years might, you know, not be a huge hit to the, so.
I know these are requests. We have a pet three, we have an fire engine, we have brush trucks right now. They don't have enough people to staff all the. Um, while my equipment. So if you want. So if he wants another brush truck, we're gonna have to think about who can actually staff the new brush truck with the type three. And the other brush and the tactical tender.
And the tactical tender. I will tell you, last summer, I know a lot of times the brush truck and tactical tender went out. And he did staff them. The type three may be more of a priority piece of equipment. But you're right, then he has to choose.
I I mean, he just doesn't have the staff to send all the pieces of equipment out. Have a piece of equipment here for wildfire response in our county.
Right.
And also maintain a structural fire department.
And and I think one of the things that we're having this discussion about tonight is priorities. You know, someone can identify a need and we need to figure out how we're gonna divide up the pie. And you were talking about that. What is our, we we're we're doing well with our money, but we should be smart and how are we gonna prioritize? I wanted to bring up that there are some departments that have gotten a lot of new equipment in the last two years. And not that this should be the only thing, but I I do think we should even things out and and make sure that each department is being treated equally as far as their request for equipment. Because every single year, I'm gonna say there's probably gonna be a department that's gonna need some type of equipment. Uh and so, you you know, i- if if one has a more desperate need, that's great. We should take that into consideration. If they're somewhat equal, I think we should take into consideration how much new equipment has one department gotten received versus the other department. So uh, you know, I I don't think that the brush truck is anything like the type one where we have amazing opportunity to get something at a really great price. I think it was just, it should found a list.
I think the brush truck was about a hundred and seventy thousand. I'll sell it to you. Okay, just just, you know, uh but I'm not suggesting it's a priority at all. That's just something that he discussed with me. Okay, what's next?
So uh administration department and uh I wanted to say right off the top of my head, um the last year's budget included uh and again, I'm not sure what it's how they consider capital, but um a new server. So that was one of the things that was included in this year's budget. Um Dan, our our key person and Donna, we got an amazing deal on the on the server. So we already have that. Um we came, I think, just like a couple dollars under budget with the server. So it was money for the server and with the additional um services or tablets for the council. And we got two laptops. And so I think uh other than, you know, just gen- general acquisition of less equipment software and things like that, I don't think the administration department has a capital request like we did for the server. You know, obviously, the, I think, not a propensity point about, you know, facilities improvement plan, I think. You know, that the city hall probably is wanting to need some building improvements, especially in the border at some point.
I would say to that point, we can uh those, that's one of those things we can go to Dull and ask for a grant for that uh for uh, you know, a contractor. Uh to do a facility uh master plan. So that's that's one way to approach it.
And I was just kind of on it. I I don't, I'm not aware of any other capital requests that we have. I mean, we have things we're gonna need to do, but wouldn't consider capital request.
I think we've we've covered it. Anything occurs to you?
I mean, I kept a running list of things that we want to include in next year's budget and, you know, obviously updating our website and things like that, but that's. We, the administration has none. The good news is we accomplished what we were supposed to accomplish for twenty twenty-two.
Question on capital improvement. I know that we're hopefully gonna have uh does wood increasing our paving farm amount be considered part of our capital improvement requests?
I don't know if the capital improver that we we have a we have a fund set aside that we put money into each year. But it it's certainly part of the budget. And so if we expand that from two hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars, now we have to put an additional hundred thousand dollars.
I think just my. We can't sell the streets. So capital, you know, things that we acquire that we can go turn around and sell.
Maybe we should maybe get into it to a public private partnership on our streets. Okay, never mind. To your point, yes, I it's gonna be an important part of this budget consideration. We get to rather get to expenditures. In my mind, it is.
Any that we're missing?
I can't think of a thing. So the the big the big ticket items are are possible uh animal shelter expansion of some sort.
Some space.
Some space um possible roof on on the street department. Uh maybe some equipment, uh we can see how that fits into the budget. And then there's not a lot of capital requests outside of that, really.
It seems really light this year, doesn't it?
Yes, but we've we've made such inroads in the last few years that maybe that's why.
I'm just looking at. Uh I was gonna say I'm looking at last year's capital requests. And so a lot of it, you know, like the Tabor Opera House request is now in our contingency. Um I don't know where Main Street lands, but last year for Street Department, we did a, they had a bunch. And I think we completed a lot. We got the snow blower and one of the lifts. Um at last year, they estimated the shop expansion to be three to four hundred thousand dollars.
They never got us a quote, so, yeah, it was.
So that was just a. Yeah.
And going into this, and the mayor and I talked about this in departments, we talked about this, is that, you know, being for twenty twenty-three may not be shining new things. It may be people, you know, because I think that uh you can see this reflected in in some of the department's responses is you know, they're they're probably gonna ask for things for their people as opposed to equipment.
So speaking of people and speaking of health, I do want to make another plug about a plime event for the Streets Department. Big liability for us as a city not to provide.
They, it's a plime event. Uh it's it's what the the fire department uses uh to clear the air. Uh with the the plime in the fire department actually attaches to an exhaust uh in the street department has, you know, twelve pieces of equipment in there, so that doesn't work. So they talked about maybe putting a fan system in the ceiling. And I don't remember why they they couldn't do it. There was a the reason with that building, it it just wouldn't work. I I I apologize. I don't remember. I'll have to ask again why they could not do it. But they but they they ran into a roadblock there.
I'm just saying that, you know, this may, for me, may be a reason to keep pushing for a new building or an expansion because the relationship between the exhaust in that place and cancers is very well established. And so my little imagination just imagines somebody from Streets coming and saying, you know what? It was my working conditions that led to my cancer. And we have a big problem on our hands after that.
Okay, thank you. Uh I I I will pursue that again. I I'm trying to remember why. I just accepted that explanation, but I did. And uh I'll see what I can do.
Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder.
Back to the, I mean, just to uh Henry's point there. Uh council member Green's point is if we're once again looking at these plime events and and everything else. You mean, looking at that land, for example, up on East Eleventh Street, it does not have to be this massive super design. It ultimately is, you take, yeah, you say let's look at like the flow of this property and where certain buildings can go. And then figure out how to put them in there that look all uniform and do it, right?
So would the consideration be, I I mean, we've got two requests for, and I'm trying to figure out how that works. You you know, I I don't think logistic or Caitlyn can jump in. I don't think logistically you can have the animal shelter split between two different buildings. I think current, you know, keeping the current building and then building something else up on eleventh or constructing something up on eleven. That's what I'm saying. Your your thought is to
Yeah.
We leave the current building completely, move everything up to a different facility. Pardon me?
With the county's, you know, happy, whatever. Figure out what else you can use that 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 building for. They paid it completely, I mean. I think a sixty by seventy building, for example, would be well for um an animal shelter.
Oh, it's huge.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just like, can't we look at like, what does that speak, I mean?
We we should look at that. The 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 issues we have, and I'm not, you know, I still think you're right. Uh that tower was put in such an awkward place and and that's, it's just the way it is. It's built, it's there. It 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 bifurcates all those lots. It's really in a weird spot, so. Uh but that's what we all apparently agreed two years ago, uh which surprised me. I I always thought that was gonna be built on the very back couple lots. And then they started building the middle, and so I went and looked at the C U P and sure enough, they built it exactly where the C U P said. So that that that's our mistake from not dealing with that on the front end, but.
So what's the dimension of the street building right now?
I don't know, but the dimension of the the was of the building that they would like to build is about ninety-six by hundred approximately. And that that's basically fitted on four city lots. Is what that does.
Say that we were to vacate that, that is a major one of those state right there for purchasing in that last line item there in page three of.
I don't know. That that building may be historically significant.
Are they in the historic district? Well, actually, they are.
The historic district is pretty big. It's really weird. It's an amoeba. But.
Anyways, I know we're not talking about them.
But no, I it's an excellent point. If we could, if we could build a building that was sufficient to the street department and vacate that land itself, you're absolutely correct. The value of it would be, you know, you know, we throw it in Jeep Liberty.
We'll keep it there, covered.
Okay, uh with all due respect to everybody's time, it's almost seven forty. Are there any last thoughts on capital requests and revenue? Dana, Tracy, any last thoughts? Okay, anybody else? Thank you all very much. Uh Tim, obviously, uh we need to coordinate with the county in terms of expansion of the animal shelter since it's a fifty fifty deal. So.
Sure, there's other 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 things we gotta get together on and negotiate on as well and just making a plug as the budget process moves forward for the city and county is, you know, as we explore our all the other jointly funded things to you know, that there'll be negotiations coming forward on contribution levels for various things, just and especially for like the emerging projects like transit and things like that.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Tim. Okay, at this time at seven thirty-nine, uh this work session is adjourned. Thank you all very much. I'm so sorry. I thought we were done. I I you're right. You're right. Uh well. Did you bring pizza?
No.
Okay, didn't think so. Uh we can keep this fairly brief. You know, we had talked about the possibility of of pay going forward uh for non-elected officials, city council, but also appointed officials playing the zone and Historic Preservation Commission. So I'd like to hear from everybody what they think we should do with with that. Will city council, should we include playing the zoning and store preservation commission in that thought process? You you were the one who has advocated for that. Do you have any numbers in mind?
Uh well, this is historic, what's the um that's taken for historic preservation.
There is none for them or P and Z.
What's the time commitment on average for the H P C?
Uh they meet twice a month and probably a, I'm gonna guess on average, an hour and a half. They've had longer meetings, you know, and they have certificates of authenticity uh or appropriate, appropriate sort of those. Um and uh, you know, so they they're put they're putting in some pretty good work. P and Z, probably more than that. Um they've been meeting twice a month also. Uh their docket has been pretty full. Uh they have a lot on their plate.
There's time reviewing the packet ideally of, you know, planning commissioner is, you know, they have a hundred and fifty-page packet that's emailed them on Friday. I go between that that Friday and Wednesday, they're reviewing a hundred and fifty pages, just like, you know, the council member does.
I mean, I will say, I know how much time it is for me to be involved. And I imagine it's probably somewhere around the time for them, maybe a little less.
I think it's less for them.
We can meet like basically every Tuesday.
Yeah, so I have, I just I'll throw out, throw out some numbers just as a thought process. Uh city council probably should uh be five hundred dollars um per month.
Okay, here.
Uh for 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 month, you know, and that P and Z and H P C could be two hundred dollars, which is what city council gets now. And that just seems like a just a a move in the right direction. It's just a, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know if it's a great idea. Just wanna get the conversation started.
Um just food for thought, I don't, however you take it, you take it. But for me, as someone who works a full-time job outside of this, this obviously would never be able to live out of city council logic. If I have had to consider going part-time to be able to mentally live myself, you know, a fair amount to try to add a personal life and everything else I'm doing um and working. Um and that would be cutting just one day out of the week. Um so in my mind, it makes sense to subsidize that pay, which would obviously not be one for one. Cause I do, I mean, twenty-two an hour at full circle. Uh but that would make sense to me, cause I'd say about eight hours, you know, review. Whatever we have to review, but we need to talk to whoever calls me for whatever it is to go check out what's happening with the rain, et cetera, et cetera. Um it it makes sense to me that it would be some level of compensation for if someone was to decide to take that time off and be a city council person.
I've never heard of anybody suggesting they would have to take time off from work to be a city council person. That's.
No, and that's uh and that's obviously because I decided to take on more, you know, I wanted to be on the um regional housing authority, they already do all the. So it's, that's from my perspective, it's okay, if someone were to do that as an option and we were to maybe get council people or that as a council person uh more responsibilities as a consequence. Um you know, shifting the balance a little bit more, would that make sense?
I would say, in a way, it kind of does make sense, but in a way, that's that's what's being suggested. We'll just use some round numbers, twenty dollars an hour, five hundred dollars a month is twenty-five hours a month, which is uh that's not insubstantial in terms of of compensation. I mean, nothing's gonna make up for the commitment the city council makes. Don't get me wrong. Uh but especially because you give away evenings. It's not about work. It's about, it's about, you know, your 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 valuable time. Uh and for people with families or, you know, so um it 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 feels like that might be an appropriate starting place, that's all. But I'm open to suggestions on numbers. Uh Ms. Green.
Um how many members are there on H P C and P and Z?
H P C is five with two alternates and then question will be, do we top it? The alternates also. Um and then uh for a P and Z, I believe it's seven.
And just throwing this out there, I do think it, part of it may need to be tied to a meeting. Because if you have a member who constantly misses meetings, you know, they would get the compensation even if they're not showing up. So I know some commissions make it per meeting. So if you come to the meeting, you get, you know, that's what you get. You get a second per meeting. Uh I don't anticipate that, hopefully we'll never have someone who's constantly. Uh, I don't anticipate that, hopefully we'll never have someone who's constantly asking, but I know it happens sometimes, and sometimes it's uncomfortable and. You know, we need to address that situation and either remove the person, but you'd hate to have that person being paid. The same as people who are actually showing up and doing the work.
So are we talking about, will we be talking about city council also? I'm, I'm just asking, you know, so, okay, let's say it's per meeting. And let's say, first of all, for, for P and Z, uh, it would only be six people to be paid, because I'm on P and Z and you can't, can't change my pay. Um, and so it'd be six people, um, but, so what if we said it's a hundred dollars per meeting? I, I'm, again, I'm throwing out ideas, come on, guys, get involved in this conversation.
I would strongly prefer that there be an attendance policy that's incorporated into the bylaws of the planning commission.
But.
And just having it, and, and, but the, but maybe updating that attendance policy and getting a little better enforcement, and then just, and, uh, I don't know if enforcement is the right word, but, uh, and then just having a set.
Well, one of the reasons I like that sort of, i- is because otherwise it becomes a payroll nightmare.
Yeah.
Okay, good point.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
But I think a compromise or a potential compromise is to be, that there's an expectation, we're not all hundred percent people. We, you know, there's, there's a time when I can't do next week, but setting of an attendance is, is the expectation for ninety percent or eighty-five percent, whatever. You feel like the number is, but, and, and that would make the. Would not make payroll nightmare of keeping track of who's attending, oh my gosh, she checked out early or whatever.
Yeah, I like that, Shannon.
I like an attendance policy, I mean, we're speaking for somebody that in summertime could be here all summer, or. And a couple summers ago, I wasn't there very often, and it's just my, my job, I wasn't able to be here, um, so. I like the idea of, of raising it and just to, uh, to put it in perspective, is I believe Tim Hill's dad. He was on council, made the same amount as Tim Hill.
I think he said that, yeah.
Yeah, so, but, but, the, the city council wages has not gone up in. Probably close to two decades, I think it is time for that, and probably also time to honor other people's commitments on. Historic Preservation Commission and Planning Zone Committee. If we do give some sort of stipend, especially with city council, maybe we actually have some more people to run for these offices as well. Um, I, I know, I'd ask anybody that moves into my ward to ask if they wanna, you know, run for city council, they'd say, hell no. It's not worth my, say, well, it's civil service, that's what it's for, right, and that's kind of what I was trying to point out, and I don't disagree. Starting at five hundred, the big thing has her hand up as well, uh, but I, I think that. It is, as you said, more than just the raw time that you're committing, it's also mental capacity. It's also a bunch of other things, so I think it's important to keep in mind.
I would agree, we, we need to keep in mind that this will not affect anybody on city council right now.
Right.
Because for city, now for P and Z and HPC, yes, we can implement it, uh, January first. Uh, but for city council, we really can't, because that's, that would only go up when, at the next election.
And that has to be voted on.
No, 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 I, what I'm saying is, you can't raise an elected official's pay or decrease it during their term. Uh, by state law, so the next time a city council member comes up for, for reelection or election, then it would kick in.
So does that mean we would have a staggered increase, because some of us are, aren't subjected to election next year? And would just continue on, and other people might be reelected, so you'd have this.
Is correct, uh, the county commissioner will deal with that all the time, where one county commissioner may be making, uh, more than other county commissioners, but that's based on state law, there's nothing they can do about that.
So just. So just using the, the numbers that you threw out, uh, we would be looking at approximately, not paying the alternates. But approximately twelve grand a year for HPC, fourteen for P and Z. And then an additional twenty-four for city council, because right now we, um, we, we.
Council would not, would not be a, a twenty-twenty-three budget consideration, the next election for city council is not till November twenty-twenty-three.
Right, I'm just, just saying, over, overall, that's how much we would expand, um, which doesn't seem horrible to me.
Okay, what, are, are we as a group okay with five hundred, two hundred, and two hundred? Okay, thank you, now, here's a nuance to that, that of course is gonna be a total pain in the ass. Is that you have, you have alternates on P and Z and HBC. And if, if, if someone doesn't show up and the alternate's there, they become a voting member. Now what do you do? Okay, I mean, I'm okay with that, as long as we understand, that's a nuance that we have to give some thought to.
You know how many alternates, two for?
Theoretically, two, two for HBC, is that correct, Lori? And then do we have alternates on P and Z?
Wow.
Just one on P and Z, yeah, so, so frankly, until they, they become permanent board members, maybe they're not in the mix.
Is the trend for those in the past for the alternates to eventually become, is it kind of like in training?
No.
And he doesn't, he, he wants to be an alternate. But, and to, to actually answer your question, no, wh- when a, a vacancy occurs, it has to be posted.
Right.
So it's not automatic that that alternate moves into that position.
Right.
I mean, he may move in that position, but that's up to the board.
Have we had any applicants?
Just, just from respect, they're like, five thousand mobs, city council is paid close to thirty thousand dollars a year, is that right?
No, I think that was the mayor, I'm not sure, um.
I'm not saying. Also considering some bigger cities, city council members did, was a classic example, that is their job. They not only have a job, they have, like, an office and staff, you know, for the city council members, and it's a, it's a much bigger deal.
Um, I'm just, I'm just.
We're better than that.
I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy to, um, that's a voting thing for my predecessors, to be able to have more, a higher paying. Counselship, uh, if it's taken us twenty years to raise city council wages. Uh, when will this happen again, should we actually, is that commensurate with? Five hundred dollars commensurate with ten years ago, or should, I mean, I'm just, I'm being devil's advocate, like.
We have no idea.
Like, what, yeah, what I'm saying is, is like, should we actually make it more? I mean.
Well, it looks like you're, I, I'm not on half, I don't think I have twenty, twenty, I have twenty twenty, it looks like planning commission members got seventy-five dollars per meeting, this is the one. Council members got fifteen thousand, four hundred and seven dollars, and mayor got eighteen thousand, seven hundred and five dollars.
So, I mean, I'm not saying we have to be like Mo, I don't wanna be like Mo, to be perfectly honest. Uh, but I'm just saying is, if this is our chance to make a difference. Is five hundred dollars the right number for the next ten years?
Yeah, I know, I would fully agree with that, and to the point of, a lot of people in our community might be interested in running. Even at the five hundred dollar mark, might feel like. Nah, not worth my time, not worth my. Well, anyways, I would say, I would say to your point, sorry to interrupt, but we want people here for the right reason, and we don't want people here for the money.
And I don't think anyone, regardless of who's five hundred, maybe a thousand, but, you know. I don't think any of those people would be here for the money, but I don't think that's a substitute for money or enough money to where they say. Uh, this isn't the most lucrative side gig, I just think it doesn't give the ability of someone my age to be involved in the same way that I am. I think I'm involved, because I don't have to pay that much for rent, you know, a little my debt. It's relatively cheap compared to literally anyone else, but anyone else in my situation, anyone that I've talked to, especially even within ten years of my age. Has been like, absolutely not, pay is not worth it, it's not worth considering, and they would be great council people. And it's not that they would be here with the wrong intentions, it's just straight up, just not worth their time, so I.
Then I would say they'd be here with the wrong intentions, you know, that, that part seems pretty obvious.
All right.
I'm sorry, Jaden.
I just had one, one consideration, you know, for example, the planning commission, there's a lot of young parents that have, that have, uh, kids who are, you know, at the, the childcare age. And so I kind of think of that as just kind of offsetting the cost that they may need to incur while they're attending, they're, they're giving public service, and they have to buy pizza and pay the baking费. Um, you know, it's just kind of helping to offset that cost for participation.
Five hundred bucks is not enough for that.
I, hell, that's why I said helping to offset, yes.
Do we have any kind of a consensus, and if not, then, then do we delay this conversation, because ultimately, we have to put this in resolution?
Just to make it one call, Max's point about picking up is like, we're starting to look at indexing. You know, more on the B side, but like, like our building permit fees didn't increase for twenty years, so we don't wanna increase them and then wait another twenty years, so just. It's like landfill fees are now indexed and rounded to the nearest dollar.
So we're gonna, we're gonna look at our, so we have on our list for the end of, eh, the year to go in or beginning of next year to look at our master fee schedule. So we'll look at our fees every year.
No, but I was just thinking like to, so that you don't wait ten years to increase whatever council pay you agree, you could have it be five hundred. This cycle, and then every year, two years, whatever, it increases by. Three percent a year, whatever, for the CPI. Less inflation. Rounded to the nearest ten bucks.
First of all, how do you know that? You could index it, and, uh, but do you in, index, uh, elected official pay? And the answer is, I don't know the answer to that, but, but then, what is the complication of implementing that over, uh, years and years of, 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 uh, elections? It, it really becomes problematic, you know. I'm not saying it couldn't be done, I'm just saying it really, it really causes problems.
I was just throwing that out.
No, I, I, I get it, and it's a good thought, but I think we have to let future councils decide. You know, what, what that's, what the value of that is, what the need is, and then we make decisions around that.
I agree with that, and I think it would be a headache to try to figure that out, it is a shame though that. We can't, we can't make a decision, can't do it for the moment, like, we're looking at years before it would impact. And so the same thing is coming again, so is there a way to, and I don't, I, index is a new term to me, so, but is there a way to say? In five years, it's increased by a hundred dollars, like some minimal nominal increase, you know?
You could do that, you could do that in resolution, maybe every five years it goes up by a hundred bucks, I, but, but if you put that in resolution, then, I don't know, then. Then you, first of all, you've limited yourself, uh, in the future, um, maybe you could put in the resolution, it should be every, it should be reconsidered every budgetary, every even budgetary year. Yeah. Something like that.
And, and I, I, just an idea, but I, I think just to, to make it so it comes back up and it doesn't get off for decades.
Same article I sent it to you about other than city council. Just can't remember where we were, we were, we were lower than the, uh, municipality of Blue River, that's what I, that was where we were, we were the lowest city council in.
Something I'd like to bring up now, this is a good conversation around city council, I think we, we at least are on the same wavelength, that we're going to increase these. Uh, we'll have to decide, uh, you know, what we put in resolution, now, here's, here's the tricky one. We are trying to convert to a weak mayor system. Now, doing that officially, you have, you have to go to vote of the people, I don't know if we dare try that in twenty twenty-three, here, here's the, here's the catch. We're gonna have somebody who's gonna run for mayor, and they're gonna let us know next spring or summer that they're gonna run for mayor. And that, that mayor will take office in twenty twenty-four. If we don't know until November of twenty twenty-three whether we're, we're a weak mayor or a strong mayor system, then how do we decide? In advance how that person's gonna be paid, and they won't know either, so I. And it, it's, it's. Well, I know, it, it, it's, it's really difficult to get your head wrapped around this. I'm gonna be mayor until January of twenty twenty-four, a new mayor will be elected in November of twenty twenty-three. That mayor, if we were to go to the ballot in twenty twenty-three. To go to, uh, what's called a, 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 a city manager, city council, form of government. Uh, we could do that, because that's the direction we wanna go, but then that mayor who's running for election wouldn't know. Which, which paradigm they're going to be in, may, maybe it's not important, maybe I'm over processing this.
I think it's important.
Okay, and so then the, the second part is, I get paid thirty thousand dollars a year, and I've worked as a full-time mayor. Um, but the paradigm in the past has been, I think Bud made like forty-eight hundred dollars a year, you know, four hundred dollars a month. Um, because he had, he was a business, he had a business, and Jamie had three businesses. And so mayors have always been part-time, um, considerations. Uh, in, in, in our, even in our strong mayor system for a hundred and forty years. So the answer is, how, how are we thinking about the next mayor? In terms of pay, because I think we need to be thinking about it now. So that someone running for mayor next summer knows, okay, here's, here's what, you know, the pay is.
Can we have, you know, if, if we change the weak mayor system, this is, if we don't, this is how much, when that just.
That's actually, that's actually good, we'd part, we might have to put that on the ballot.
Right.
In the ballot leverage, but that, I think that's a good suggestion.
I don't think we can predict whether or not, but, you know, uh, how, or is the city's gonna vote to go along with that system, I mean. I don't know about council, but I certainly feel conflicted about it, um.
A lot of people will be up there.
Exactly, so I. I'd rather just give them, like, these are the possibilities.
Okay.
And if someone's comfortable with running for either position. The, and the very least, they'll know what they're running for, regardless of what happens, if they do choose to.
Okay, I, I, I think that's a great idea, because it, it, it solves the conundrum, yeah, at least you're, you're letting them know, it's, it's, it's either or, and we don't know yet what it is. But whatever it turns out to be is what you have to live with. What does everybody else think? Okay, uh, now, the other possibility is we don't try to go to the ballot for, uh, a ci- a city manager, city council, form of government. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, and maybe we do it in twenty twenty-four, if we do that, th- then whatever we are gonna pay the new mayor. Will, will stick for four years.
Cause you're four years.
It's a four-year term, and you can't change it during those four years.
Yeah.
I, I, your, your suggestion's a good one, um, at some point, we're gonna have to decide. We don't have to decide that tonight at all, it's just that it's been on my mind, I've been a little bit concerned about how we treat that. But that's, I think it's a good answer.
All right, so I just did a little research, in twenty eighteen, town council on break, made twenty, well, five thousand years, so five hundred dollars a month. In twenty, it's happened, town council, perhaps, my suggestion. Council on the green is to go six hundred dollars a month, just so we're not less than fifty percent. But my only, that's my only.
I would, I would happily go with six hundred bucks. What is everybody there?
I think that makes total sense, I'm well for it, I think that makes it much easier. I think that makes it much.
Tracy.
Easier, so.
What do you think about that proposal?
I'm fine with them.
Okay, Danny, you too? Okay. So we're talking about six hundred, two hundred.
No, what did you say?
I know, I said, you, you're gonna be running next this minute, I think.
I don't know that.
Is her term up?
I, I don't.
This year?
No, not, not, not by this minute, this time next year, I would have to decide.
Oh, right, the twenty twenty-three election, got it.
Or you'd be, who's the other one? No, Tim, that, Tim and I are the same word, he gets another year.
Okay.
So it's one, it's you, Tracy?
It'll affect some people and some people it won't right away, and it will affect them this. Huh?
That's kinda what it's gonna be, I don't think we can change that.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys, good conversations. Any other thoughts? I'm gonna try to adjourn this meeting, I, I'm not sure if I should or not.
We still have twenty-five minutes left, Marin, or a lot of time.
No, it was supposed to be under eight.
What?
Yeah, we're five in this slide. Yeah, we're five in this line.
It was supposed to be over six forty-five.
That was the name.
I, it wasn't. I don't know, that, I think that's a matter of conversation, I think we should do it sooner rather than later, we'll go to Christiana and ask her to to prepare that for us. The mayor, mayor consideration doesn't really have to be done until, but, well, actually, I'm wrong about that, it, it's gonna need to be done before the end of the year.
So maybe we do it all at the same time?
Yes. But for the mayor thing, all, all we'll be discussing is.
Oh, well, we, I mean, I don't know, because it's a full-time job at that, and we are expecting someone to have that as a position. And we want someone who, like, say, you know, someone who's in my position, who has a full-time job. You might have two full-time jobs, and you're also not probably gonna be able to survive off of thirty K if you're.
No, so, so you make an excellent point, I, I've always thought if you're gonna stay as part of the system, thirty K isn't bad.
No.
It just so happens, I'm like, I own my house.
Yeah.
You know, I have, I have a huge advantage, thirty thousand dollars is fine with me. But it wouldn't be for a young person with a family who wanted to be a mayor. Uh, but the flip side of that is we try to wean ourselves off of a mayor being full-time.
Right, no, I, I, I fully agree, it's more so if it's our full-time position for whatever reason.
It is our intention that it's never gonna be a full-time position again, that's, that's what we've been working towards for five years. And so I, I appreciate that thought, and I tend to agree with it, if it was gonna be a full-time position, we should think about even more, uh, but I don't think that's where we're headed.
All right.
Any final thoughts? Fire the mayor. I'm trying, so. That, that's be at the top of the ballot, I wish you did.
When do we revisit the sidewalk signs? I don't remember, I'm sorry. Oh, January was, uh, when we, when we said we would come back with some ideas, and I've got some photographs. I did find some communities that actually do have signs for businesses, um, took some pictures of them, don't like the look of them, but they have done it, so we wouldn't be out of complete line, you know, to actually put a name of a business as a, wait, yes, January.
January, thank you.
What I would like to bring to you, to the council, uh, when we, when we do look at that again, is at some point, takes, find some of these designs or something that the, the council likes and introduce them, have some photo renderings done, so, okay, this is what the street looks like now. And then if you were to put in a pole that looked like this, and you were to kind of repeat that down the street on both sides, this is the visual impact it would have if you're standing in the middle of the street, and so you can just immediately see that visual connection, and maybe do like, you know, your choice A, B, or C.
Good, thank you. Any final thoughts? At eight oh nine, the city council board session is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori, for covering this area, you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you for being here, Tim, thanks, if you can still hear me.